Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this Monday, March 25th, 2024, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And our first order of business is to go into closed meeting. And we do have a resolution. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711. Number one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. Number one, juvenile detention commission. Do I have a motion to go into closed meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. DeMott?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, we are now in closed session. Okay, we are back from closed meetings. So I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed meeting. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fritchowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, and now we're going to have a motion to certify our closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fritchowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, I just want to make an announcement that our county attorney, Mr. McMahon, is a little under the weather tonight and that is why he's not present. So at this time, I'll ask our county administrator, Ms. Hill, to lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand as you're able for a moment of silence. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our first order of business is we have a public hearing on a special use permit, Ms. Sarah Jones, with a dog grooming business. And so, Bree, I think you're going to lead us through that.
Yes ma'am, good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you, glad to be back. So this request is for a piece of property located off of Mount Tabor Road, which is in the northern portion of the county, right outside the town of Blacksburg. You can see here on the Zoomed In vicinity map, this darker line here that is Mount Tabor Road. And then this is the aerial photo of the property. This property actually consists of three different parcels that are kind of combined. They're owned by the same owner. And then this road right here is Shiloh Way. This is Mount Tabor, and this is Cobankalo. This is your zoning map. This property is zoned agricultural A1. Across the street, Shiloh Way, that property is zoned residential R2. So as stated, the property is located near the intersection of Shiloh Way and Mount Tabor Road. It consists of approximately 2.292 acres in the A1 agricultural zoning district. The applicant is seeking to relocate her business, which is currently located in Blacksburg. She is wanting to locate it to her residence within the existing garage structure as she has plans to move toward retirement. In our zoning ordinance, a home-based business is defined similarly to a home occupation. The distinguishing factor is that you have outside employees. So she does have an employee that does not reside on the property that will be working in the business. So that's what requires it to have the special use permit. So as stated, she's owned a pet grooming business for 25 years and is looking to move toward retirement and downsize her operations. In 2001, we did have an application for a special use permit to allow a commercial kennel. However, there were additional services beyond the grooming that were anticipated. They were requesting overnight boarding, a dog daycare that would operate throughout the day, and then also the grooming. That application was actually withdrawn by the owner, so no action was taken toward that permit. This plan is to just have the grooming. She plans to completely renovate the existing garage structure if the special use permit is approved. And the interior of the garage will be set up to have two grooming stations, photo stations, a couple of storage areas, a counter to serve the customers, and then of course, storage of equipment and supplies. So this is the closer up aerial of the property, so you can see the house and the layout. So this is the house here, and then this is the detached garage. There is a deck that goes between the two. This is Mount Tabor in this area, and then this is the shared drive. It's shared with the neighbor, you can kind of see how they separate here. So this is the minor concept plan. Parking will be provided in the front for the property owners. There will be two client parking spots here, and the potential for another employee parking spot here. I would like to note, this was printed from our GIS, and we all know that those property lines are not always entirely correct. We hand draw those, so if we have properties that do not have surveys, we do have to close property lines, and so sometimes that does throw the property line off. You can see the property line is actually the fence line right here. This is a closer view of the client parking area. She does have enough space to provide the two required parking spaces, nine by 18. And then this is the proposed garage interior. As stated, she's planning to have two photo stations. She does some custom photos for the grooming for clients, and actually creates gifts and mementos. Two grooming stations here, and then back here are the tubs and the drying areas with the front counter. She will replace the existing roll-up garage doors with French doors. However, it will still maintain the look of a residential type building in nature. This is the view of the existing house from Mount Tabor, and then this is the view of the shared drive, and you can see where those driveways split off. This is the view of the existing garage, which will be rehabilitated. And then this is the garage door that will be replaced with the French doors. And this is the view looking to the left and right on Mount Tabor. This is looking towards Shiloh Way, and then this is looking in the opposite direction. You can see the 30 mile per hour speed limit sign. So drop-off and pickup hours will be between 8:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. Generally, she staggers those. As you could tell, she doesn't have a lot of room to keep dogs while she brings others in, so it's kind of a service them, they leave, and the next ones come in. They generally pick up and drop off every two to four hours, depending on the dog. Expected traffic to and from the site is no more than 18 trips per day. And VDOT has reviewed this. They've stated she will need a low-volume commercial entrance permit. However, they took no exception to the request. The site is served by private well-inseptic. Minimal improvements will be made to the site other than the rehab to the structure. It will not be expanded, it will be within the existing footprint. No portion of the property is located in the FEMA-designated flood zone. Noise reduction methods will be used during renovations to the garage structure. No equipment will be used outside of that structure. And dogs will be required to be leashed while outside, and they shall not be allowed outside for extended periods of time. Dogs with a history of barking will be given express grooms, so that means their owners have to pick them up much quicker once they are completed. And we have verified that the applicant's insurance does cover liabilities related to the animals on-site during the grooming. Here is your comprehensive plan map. You can see this property lies within an area designated as residential transition. Any development here should be designed to be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Since it will largely remain the look of a garage minus the roll-up door, it does still maintain that residential character. And then it also is supported by the Economic Development Section of our comprehensive plan. So the proposed use does provide a viable use for an existing accessory structure. It is for grooming services only with no overnight boarding or daytime boarding. Approval of the special use permit allows for continuation of the services she offers and gives her the flexibility to be able to retire. The proposed development will generate minimal impacts on the surrounding landowners, with proposed impacts being mitigated by the applicant and through the conditions that were recommended by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 13th. They recommended approval on an eight-to-o vote. We did have three members of the public present to speak in support of the special use permit. Commission members also noted that they were very impressed by the amount of support shown by the general public. You all have received several letters in support of the request, so they did note that in their approval. So the conditions recommended include: The site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept sketch submitted. Renovations to the garage accessory structure, as noted in the concept sketches and application, shall be completed prior to business operations commencing on-site. Hours of operation shall be limited to 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., Monday through Friday. No outdoor kennels shall be permitted on the property with the animals all being housed inside. The walking and transfer of animals shall be done while animals are leashed, and they shall not be remaining outside for an extended period of time. Owners shall ensure property boundaries are delineated and all business operations occur within those boundaries. No more than eight animals shall be groomed on-site per day. No overnight commercial kenneling or boarding of animals shall take place on-site. A low-volume commercial entrance shall be installed and approved by VDOT prior to business operations commencing. And any exterior lighting shall comply with the dark-skies-friendly standards. So adjoining property owners were notified. In accordance to state code, public hearing signs were placed on the property, and we did run legal ads and then used Messenger. Staff has received several public comments. Thirty-one-plus letters of support, and I had to add the plus in this morning because they were still coming in as I was finalizing the PowerPoint. I believe we're probably closer to 35 at this point. Two letters in opposition from area residences. Both of those residences spoke to, they were concerned about allowing a business in the residential area and changing the look of their residential area to a business, to a commercial area. So that was their concern. Additional comments may be made from members of the public here this evening. But until then, I will take any questions you have. The agent and the applicant are here, and they are prepared to answer any questions, plus describe the actual drop-off/pick-up process a little clearer to you.
Supervisor Bone?
Any signage, or what's the signage?
She has not indicated that there will be any proposed signage. She would be allowed a small sign, but since it's in a residential district, it would be restricted in size.
To what?
I want to say 16 square feet, but don't hold me to that. I know it's not as large as general business, which would be 150 square feet.
Can it be anywhere on the lawn?
She could have a freestanding sign. It would have to meet the setback requirements. It could not exceed a certain height. I think it's 10 feet in a residential zoning district. But to have like a 16 or even a 32-square-feet sign, 10 feet would be a little...
Great, thank you.
...large. You're welcome.
Okay, Supervisor Kits? Supervisor King?
I have no question, but I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and people were really excited about her keeping up with it.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, Supervisor Grafsky?
No, I think you addressed my only concern as it related to the employee parking spot and the property boundaries, so thank you.
Supervisor Demoss?
Thank you very much for the presentation. What does a low-volume commercial entrance look like? What is that?
It basically means it has to have the taper. And the reason for that is so that a way cars can more quickly get off and get on to the property. And it has to be a little bit wider. So it's just basically the width and the taper radius changes.
Okay.
And it does have to be paved. So it can't be, you can't be pulling onto gravel, which...
So it's probably just upgrades at Mount Tabor?
Correct.
And then maybe some surface treatment or something?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, we do have some folks that signed up. And so I'll call their names, so we'll go through the signup list first, and then if there's anyone else that wants to talk about this particular special use permit, they may. So our first person tonight is Ben Snodgrass.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this application on behalf of Ms. Sarah Jones to move her small business, Pampered Pets Grooming LLC, to her standalone garage, which he proposes converting to a dog grooming salon. My name is Ben Snodgrass, I'm with Spicer, Olden &amp; Associates. First of all, there would be no sign at the property. There's no sign proposed, and the applicant is not proposing or seeking to have any kind of signage. In 2001, Ms. Jones applied to the county to perform this kind of work as a home occupation for her grooming salon and her business. And she performed that work in her basement at the property for four years until 2005. Then, as she started to outgrow the business, the business got bigger. It moved to Blacksburg at her current commercial site. The building is being sold in Blacksburg, and so she's looking to downgrade and downsize. And so she's looking to move a little bit closer to home. Ms. Jones' small business has enriched the community for 25 years. As part of her business, she trims, bathes, and grooms dogs, and then makes available to them a themed photo booth. She works about 60 to 75 hours per week, and approval of this proposal will allow her to start to slow down a little bit and allow her to continue her work in a more sustainable fashion. This proposal is consistent with a comprehensive plan and is consistent with other commercial uses of properties in the area. First of all, about five houses up the road and around a curve, about 800 feet away, there is actually a small business or a home business being run from a home Stern FFL, which offers services such as online transfers of firearms, firearm repairs, and modifications. And then about five houses south, there's a single-family home that's being used as a bed and breakfast. It's called Mount Tabor Ranch B&amp;B at 1671 Mount Tabor Road. There are also nearby farms, including a horse farm. So this proposed use is not going to change the nature of the area and the surrounding homes. Also, we were presented with a couple of questions regarding the upkeep of the property. There had been some inoperable vehicles on the property, but when our client had been informed that she could only have one inoperable vehicle on the property, those other vehicles were removed. She's recently removed a dead tree from the property. She's maintained the property and kept it, upkept it. There is a barn on the property, about halfway to the back of the property. There's about two acres of property. And about halfway to the back, there is a barn, and she had torn off the roof to assess repairs, and she intends to replace that roof in a timely manner after this hearing. If the application is approved, she will replace the existing garage door with a glass French door. Will replace the side door with a quality, high-quality exterior door, and will install double-pane windows. She will insulate the exterior walls and ceilings as well. And she will use interior noise-absorbing wall decor and decorations and rubber floor mats to minimize sound within the building. I can ensure the county, Ms. Jones, is conscientious of her neighbors and will go to great lengths to ensure the business continues to be an asset to the county. The business typically performs five to eight dog rooms in a day. And at her current location, she has two parking spaces for her clients that are shared actually with another business. She staggers the client arrivals, and it's rare that multiple clients arrive at the same time. She'll text or call clients when their dogs are ready for picking up their animals to ensure that multiple clients don't arrive at the same time. Concerning the procedure, at the arrival, the client arrives with the pet on a leash or in arms or in a carrier. The details of the groom are discussed, and then the client departs. The check-in procedure takes about two to four minutes. And then upon completion, she texts or calls, and the individual comes back, and it takes about three to five minutes to check the dog out. So there's not a lot of time that the clients are actually there. I thank you so much for your time.
Oh, the perfect ending there. And your office is located in Blacksburg.
We are in Blacksburg.
I forgot to say when you came up to say where you reside.
Yes. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You must have timed that exactly right. All right. And our next person up is Charles Sacks. So come on up and state your name and where you reside. And for those in the audience that maybe aren't used to our procedure, we have four minutes, and the yellow light goes off at three minutes. And then when the red light goes off on the podium there, that means the four minutes are up. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Charles Sacks. I live at 310 Revolution Circle in Christiansburg, Villas of Pepper's Ferry. So I just want to show you what they do with the photo booths. And this is... So I just want to show you what they do with the photo booths, and this is an example of our lovely Shih Tzu Poodle, who is a Clemson fan on football. And then, these are the calendars that they make. This is the one for November, and they were baking up a storm that day. So, and they changed them, but this was for St. Patty's Day. So it's very, very, they do a great job. The dogs love it there. They're well-treated. Sarah's an awesome groomer, groomer, and you feel like you're part of their family when you take your dog there. And the dog, really, our dog cries when she's gone home, not only she's home to the groomer. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. And next up, we have Ms. Sarah Jones. Come on up.
I actually have, I received another letter this morning that we made copies of, if y'all would like it. My name is Sarah Jones. I live at seventeen-twenty-three Mount Tabor Road. I am the owner of Pampered Pets Grooming LLC. First, I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the county staff for taking the time to hear my request for a special use permit to allow me to move my dog grooming business into my standalone garage. And thank you to the friendly faces of clients and family and friends I see here to support me. I've run my small business in Montgomery County for almost twenty-five years now, actually next month, and it's been a blessing to be able to provide dog grooming to our community. The reason for my proposal is that the building that I've been renting for the business for the last nineteen years is going to be sold. Not ready to retire from grooming, so I'll need a new home for my business. I am, however, ready to start easing into retirement and slow down the pace of work I've been doing for nearly twenty-five years, so allow me to have a personal life and spend time with my parents in their aging years. If I'm allowed to run the business at my property, it will allow me to do that. It is my biggest wish that I can continue to groom our community's dogs. Many of my clients have been with me for decades, and I share a special bond with my clients and their animals. I'm going to read a couple of letters that I have from neighbors that live on Shiloh Way. They are the two that are closest to me. And then I have a couple of letters from clients that I'm going to read. The first one is from Jay Sutherland. Hi, Sarah. My wife, Lee, and I live at nine-forty Shiloh Way, right across the road. We support your move to your home and wish you continued success. As a matter of fact, we have a sheltie that would very much like to partake in your bath time. I am certain you will enjoy this move and hope it is a pleasant change. It's a fine addition to the neighborhood. Jay Sutherland. This next one is from Gwendolyn Howell. Hello, I received your mail regarding a grooming salon out of your home. I wanted to say that I think what you're doing is amazing and offer my support and maybe another client or two if needed. I hope you are able to move forward with your adventure. Happy tales. Gwen, nine-twenty-five Shiloh Way. The next two are clients that live within a quarter mile of my home. My husband, Brian Lindemuth, and I would like to give a statement of support in relocating Pampered Pets to the owner's residence at seventeen-twenty-three Mount Tabor Road. We live near this address at eight-ninety Coalwood Way and drive by this residence daily. We support the owners in continuing their business in their detached garage. We have no concerns with increased traffic or parking issues. The owners have a plan for noise containment and will do everything they can to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. Susan Lindemuth and Brian Lindemuth. This is from Lindsay Hale at eight-sixty-six Coalbank Hollow Road. I've been a client of Pampered Pets in Blacksburg since 2008 for grooming services. I am personally so thankful that they have, that we have such an amazing small business here in the New River Valley that provides such high-quality and safe services for myself and the community. Small businesses must be protected. Many unfortunately went out of business as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Pampered Pets for over a decade has remained on a waitlist for their clients. That, along with their Google reviews and this letter, should support, of support, should qualify their business practices and value to the community. I wholeheartedly support their request, not just as a client, but as someone who lives very close proximity to where this business will be located. I personally own a home and live point-two miles away from seventeen-twenty-three Mount Tabor. I don't believe the community or neighborhood will be adversely affected by the new location of this business, and I know Dave and Sarah are the owners to be good and courteous neighbors. Lindsay Hale. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time to address the special use permit? Okay, come on up. Just state your name and where you reside.
David and Chrissy Wilson, we reside at eleven-twenty Spree Street in Christiansburg. So this is one of things that we got with our Sarah, and it made for us is a blanket of our three dogs. So we've actually been clients of them for going on twelve years now. So they've been very good to our dogs. And actually, this past weekend, I had texted Dave, and I was like, I was like, hey, is their grooming appointment this weekend or next weekend? And he actually said, no, it was this weekend. I was like, crap. And I had totally forgot, because we were going out of town. And he's like, you know what? He's like, y'all go on. We'll move them to next weekend, or next week. It'll be all good. That's how good of a business that they are, and they have done this for us for twelve years. So we really support them. I don't know what we would do without them, and they have just been great with our dogs for the last twelve years and everything, so. They'll definitely abide by all the rules and regulations and everything, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up? Okay, see a couple.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Steve Castle. I'm wild without that thing.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm from Blacksburg, and I am here in support of Sarah and Dave and Pampered Pets. My dogs, Bo and Bella, have been clients of Pampered Pets for approximately eight years, and there is absolutely no other place that I would care to take them. My dog, Bo, he is a special dog, and we're going to leave it at that. And so I call Sarah the dog whisperer. She somehow can not only groom my Australian Shepherd, but she also manages to get him in those themed outfits and can get incredible pictures that my friends and family always want to see when he's done. This is a very successful business with loyal clients. Sarah and Pampered Pets provide a service that is in great need and demand in the area. The current location that they are currently at is always clean. They are always welcoming. There is never any visual deficiencies at this resident, at this business, and it's well taken care of. From the outside of their current business, you cannot tell in any way that there is a business there, and I do not anticipate that changing with the change of venue. They are caring and always have true love for taking care of the animals in their care. It is quiet inside. Yes, once you're inside, you can hear a dog barking, and that's usually mine doing it. So the express grooming that they're speaking of, that is about my dog, so that's okay. They're prompt in letting me know when to drop off, when in approximate timeframe for completion, as well as ensuring, letting me know when they are ready, so I can pick them up in a timely manner. In closing, I just would like to hope that you will allow Sarah to make this transition so that she can continue to make all of our pets look as amazing as they currently do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Catherine Otto, and I live in Blacksburg, and I happen to be Sarah's first customer when she first opened her business up in her lower level of her house. At that time, I had a dog who could not get in the car with me very well because she would get sick. So Sarah offered a service to actually come and get the dog from the house. We didn't live very far from her, and she would bring her home every day. That is the type of business that she runs. She does offer special attention to every animal that's there. Her staff is excellent. I agree with everyone on saying that she and her staff always let you know when your animal is due to come in, when your animal is ready to be picked up. And I'm one that occasionally would not remember to pick up my animals, so they would constantly let me know that it was time to come get the last animal that I had. So anyway, I hope that you all will let her continue her business, because I do not feel that there is any way that she'll let anyone down. She needs to do this for herself. She wants to spend more time at home and with her family, and this will give her the opportunity. Rather than paying a rent, she will be able to invest it in her home and do the upgrades that she's wanted to do for a long time. So thank you very much for your attention and the consideration of letting this business succeed. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward at this time to address the special use permit? Okay, okay, come on up.
Do I have to hit this? Hello, my name is Marty Sacks. I live at three-ten Revolution Circle. My husband came up here early, earlier, Charlie, and he stole my thunder by taking my calendar of Tootie in her Pennsylvania Dutch girl costume. There really isn't a whole lot more I can add, because everyone else has said everything we needed to know here and how wonderful Sarah, Dave, and Jess are, two of these wonderful pets of ours. There are babies. My baby is fourteen years old. She'll be fifteen April sixth, April twenty-sixth, and she suffers from Cushing's disease. So unfortunately, she's going to be crossing the Rainbow Bridge soon. But Sarah and Dave have lovingly taken care of her since she was a puppy, and they have watched over her and told me when I've needed to take care of, taking her to the vet because she's had a little lump on her chest, or one on her foot, or when she needs special attention. They have watched over her like she was their own for fourteen and a half years. I hope Tootie will be here so that I can take her in October to Sarah's new location. I hope she'll still be here with us, because Tootie's going to be our last little puppy. But we support Sarah, Dave, and Jess highly. They are not only fantastic company groomers, mom and pop, that survived the pandemic when so many other companies failed, but they're just wonderful people. They are just wonderful citizens of Blacksburg. They're wonderful friends. They are kind, kind people that'll do anything for anyone. They even took in this Clemson person. Dave and I talked football, Big Dave, when I'd go in to take Tootie, and we'd compare Virginia Tech versus Clemson Tigers. I just hope you will support these wonderful people, this mom and pop organization with Jess, and keep them here in this community and let them continue their business so that she can retire the way she needs to and keep this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward? Okay, come on up.
My name is Erin Mayberry. I live in Blacksburg, and I've been a client of Sarah and Dave's for about ten years now. Three of my dogs have gone to them. My first dog that went to them passed away almost a year ago, and I texted Dave when it happened, and I said, I know Wicked's due for a groom in a couple of weeks, but this happened unexpectedly, and we won't see you. Him and Sarah and Jess sent a heartfelt note, letter in the mail to me, and it just meant a lot to me. That's the kind of people that they are. And then when I unexpectedly and on a whim adopted two dogs a few months later, I texted Dave, and I said, Dave, I did a thing. And he said, you know, we're full right now, but I'll make it work. I'll make it work. And that's the kind of people that Dave and Sarah are. They treat their clients like family. Ever since I've been going to them, they never have an issue with parking. They only have a few spots right outside the building for client parking. I've never come to that shop and had an issue where I can't park or there's any sort of congestion parking. I rarely ever run into any other clients when I'm dropping off or picking up. They do a really great job of staggering their clients and texting everybody when they're ready to pick up, ready to drop off, so you barely even see anybody. And like they said, it's in and it's out, and they're very, very amenable to time in that way. I groom-shopped for a while before I found Dave and Sarah, and I'll say this, they're the first groomer that I found that my pets actually look forward to going to, and they don't shake or cry when they know where they're going. They treat them like their own, and I just, I don't know what I would do without them, and I really hope they can continue their business. They work a lot. I know they only take a couple of weeks off a year, and Sarah works a lot, and she deserves to have this lead into retirement so that she can spend more time at home, more time with her family. She deserves it. So I hope you'll consider her request. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Okay. See, no one. We'll close the public address, and Supervisor Demonts and I, I think, are on the same wavelength here. Since we have so many people here, we don't, normally don't do this, but we have this item on to vote under a new business, and we could make a change in our agenda if a board member would make that motion that we could go ahead and vote on this while folks are here. Do I hear such a motion to pass this? Okay? And that is in your, in your area, right Supervisor Bone? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm just so glad that so many people came to support you. Thank you.
Is this motion to move it ahead in the agenda to vote on it now? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, roll call. Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Fridjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demonts?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. And now entertain a motion to pass a special use permit.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fridjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demonts?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. There you go.
Can I say one thing just really quick? I'm really sad that my district is losing your business, but I'm really happy that Montgomery County is keeping your business. Thank you.
Yeah. I'd just like to say, in all the time I've been here, I don't think I've ever seen a turnout like this for, for any business or any special use permit, and all the positive comments. And all I got to say is that the Joneses must feel, yeah, yeah, we felt it, so. All right, thank you all very much. Okay, our next order of business is a public address, and so I always read sort of our guidance on that. And this is the time that the Board of Supervisors welcomes citizens to present comments on issues related to the county. A signup sheet is available before the meeting for citizens to sign up to speak. Following the speakers that have signed up, members from the audience may address the board. All comments must be directed to the chair and the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room. It is our time to listen to your concerns. The board does not reply to questions during this time. Please state your name and where you reside when you come to the podium. You will have four minutes to speak either as an individual or as a representative. At the end of three minutes, you will see a yellow reminder light appear on the box on the podium. At four minutes, a red light will signal you that your time is up. Speakers may leave any written statements and/or information for the board with our board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should they engage in personal attacks, use profanity or abusive language, or debate with the audience. During public address, we ask the audience to please be respectful of the speaker's time by not applauding or interrupting. And with that being said, we did have a person that signed up for public address, and that is Ms. Panabaker, Virginia Panabaker. Come on up and state your name and address, or your name and where you reside.
Hey, hello. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share a public comment tonight. My name is Virginia Panabecker, and I'm here as a member of the New River Valley Chapter of Virginia Organizing. My address, I do live in Roanoke now. I used to live in the county, and I still work in Blacksburg. My address is eighteen Campbell Avenue Southeast in apartment C, Roanoke, Virginia, two-four-zero-one-one. in Apartment C, Roanoke, Virginia, 24011. We're at Virginia Organizing, the New River Valley Chapter. We're a community-led, nonpartisan organization that focuses on addressing issues in our communities. Everyone needs safe, healthy, and affordable housing. Unfortunately, this is not a reality for all NRV residents. According to the Housing and Urban Development, 14% of Virginians lived in inadequate housing between 2014 and 2018, which is defined as housing having three or four maintenance issues, such as water leaks, mold, holes in the floor, inadequate heating, nonfunctional plumbing, or major appliances, and faulty wiring. Many families in the NRV face just such living conditions in the only homes they can secure, over 4,000 of whom spend more than 50% of their monthly income on housing and cannot afford needed repairs, increasing the risk of severe health consequences. There is a critical need for funding for repairing low-income housing in the NRV, and I have a handout here that I'll provide the board clerk with additional details that we've learned about this and how addressing this need will improve health and well-being for many people in our communities. As others in our chapter have shared in previous meetings, I think you've already heard from some of us, we're asking Montgomery County Board of Supervisors to support establishing a whole home repair program to grant money to low-income homeowners and also to landlords with low-income renters for needed repairs. In this program, for landlords to be eligible for funds, they must keep renters in their homes for at least three years. This helps with housing security and holds landlords accountable so that if they get money for repairs, the residents have the opportunity to stay for at least three years before they raise rates. We recognize creating a program like this includes working out quite a few details, such as how to implement the program. We appreciate that several of you have taken time to meet with us already. We'd like to continue to meet with you to determine the best way forward. And Supervisor King and Supervisor Kits, I believe we haven't had a chance to talk with you yet to share more information and to hear your thoughts on this. We'd like to work with you to schedule a time to meet in the next three weeks or so, if that's possible. We think that we can help some people in our community have a better quality of life with this whole home repair program. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and we'll probably follow it via email. But I'll share my comments in the handout with the board clerk for your reference.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time for public address? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on board. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. You know, I made, I did some quotes last week, and one of them was, "Make no mistake about it. Inflation is a tax and not by accident." That's a quote from Ronald Reagan. Again, we are over $34 trillion in debt. A trillion dollars is $1,000 billion, okay? A million times a million equals a trillion. Last week, our governments agreed to spend additional $1.2 trillion to avert a partial government closing. $1.2 trillion. Almost 2 to 1 Democrats voted for the spending all in the name of not having, all in the name not to have a partial government shutdown. 87% of the Democrat representatives voted yes. 46% of the Republicans voted yes in this spending bill. Virginia Senators Tim Kaine and Mark Warner voted yes for more debt. District 9 Representative Morgan Griffin voted against this great spending spree. What's in the bill? We have 14, over 1,400 earmarks detailed on 1,000 pages, and this was released just one day prior to both parties being forced to vote on the deal. Now, in this, some of the earmarks include $250,000 for the Byrd Center for Congressional History and Educational Archives. He was a Democratic Senator who was a former KKK chapter leader and Senator from West Virginia. There's $2 million for Kelvin Selfish Nursery proposed by Susan Collins and Angus King. We got $388,000 going to Columbia University in New York, a private university which has a $13.6 billion endowment, yet Schumer wants to give another $388,000 of taxpayer money. A million dollars granted to save an elderly LBGQT advocacy group in New York all in the name of cultural competency. So there's a million dollars there. You know, it's just incredible you have all this wasted spending all in the name of trying to keep the government from shutting down. Who's going to pay for all this debt? The Fed is continually printing money. During a general meeting, Montgomery County CFO said, "Our money supply is in a similar position as during the Great Depression." When is this market? What are we going to do about playing for this market correction? It's going to happen. You know, a quote from George Washington, I said before, "The last official act of any government is to loot the treasury." My idea is, what does loot the treasury mean? It means loot the taxpayer. With all this spending of money, what, you know, we don't have. Lack of money means loss of freedom. Fewer and fewer things we can do. And it kind of reminds me of, I was recently in Charlotte having dinner at one of my favorite restaurants. It's a sushi and hibachi restaurant, and I know the chef's real well. And he's been here, they're from Vietnam. They've been here for about 20 years. We were talking, and you know, I said, "We've known each other for a long time." And he goes, "Bob, what's going on here?" He goes, "I come from Vietnam." You know, when you get successful in Vietnam, the government comes in and robs you of your success. You don't get to own anything. You own nothing, and you're supposed to be happy. Yes, you have a living wage, but no freedom or liberty." He loves the USA, doesn't want USA to become a communist country, and neither do I. So we got to quit the spending, and that's, and that includes on a local level. We're spending money on the school board who's going to have a declining enrollment, and we just got to, you know, we got to become frugal with our money spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward for public address? All right, see, no one. We'll go ahead and close public address. And our next item is an addendum. Ms. Hill, do we have anything in that order?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, following that, we are going to enter into a work session. And during the work session, we have two items we're going to be talking about, and the budget and the health insurance benefits for retirees. And so do I have a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demonts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. So we'll start with budget.
Okay, we distributed some information that was in answer to your questions from last meeting. If you have any questions about that, we can address those. And if you have any other questions, we can talk about those as well. We have, we actually have two slides, Jen, so you might have to slip, flip to the next one, too. I'm sorry. We distributed this information to you, but Chair Biggs and I were discussing today that it might be helpful to share this so the public can see what kind of impact would come from these tax rate increases that have been proposed. So this chart shows several different assessed values so people can kind of plug into the range that their house might be, or property might be assessed at, and then look at the incremental changes based on various tax rate increases. And the second slide shows the same information for the median home values in the three areas of the county.
Thank you for getting that. I think that's good to see.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, let's see if we do have some questions. I'll look down to this side. Supervisor Grafsky, do you have any questions about any of the budget items that were sent out or anything that's come to your mind?
No, I don't have any questions, but I appreciate getting the additional information last week. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Supervisor Demonts?
No additional questions tonight.
Okay. Supervisor King?
No, I don't have no questions, but I appreciate staff getting this together. But also, you have to remember, too, I know last year we lowered the tax rate, but majority of the people still paid more where it was reassessed.
Okay. Supervisor Kits?
I don't have any questions. I just want to make this statement that I'd like to put forth coming as we move forward to talk more about the adjustment period for assessments to two, maybe three instead of four, so we don't have such a large swing. I know we brought that up. I'd just like to bring it to the forefront, make sure we bring that forward, but that's all.
Okay. So like, maybe on a future agenda, have that on there, okay? Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to ask Ms. Hill or Ms. McGruder to clarify what Supervisor King just said. When you have a revenue neutral, that means, on average, people are paying the same tax rate.
That's correct.
Statistically, half of the people are paying more, and the other half are paying less. It just averages out to be the same.
That's correct. So if people's value of their property increased more than the average rate, their taxes went up. And if their property values increased less than the average rate, their tax would go down.
And if I can remember correctly, Blacksburg Homes increased more than the county in Christiansburg, which means Blacksburg residents did have more taxes that they had to pay, on average.
Did Blacksburg increase? Mark's nodding, yes. That's correct.
Right. So, but I can't, I can't say that, you know, 50% were more and less, but it all averaged to be the same. So there were more and less. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. And Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
I don't have anything to add other than what I've said in the past.
Okay. Does that bring to mind any other questions about the budget? All right. I just want to thank staff for getting those charts together. I think those are beneficial for all concerned. And with that being said, then we can move to our second topic. The health insurance benefits for retirees that Supervisor Demonts has had us looking at and staff getting information. And so I'm going to let Ms. Hill address this.
It needs to start on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Slide 11.
Sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. At the last meeting that we discussed this, you had requested that we look at a new option, which we're calling Plan C, that shown, excuse me, shown at the bottom of the page. And that provides a 60% contribution for individuals that have either 25 or 30 years of service, depending on what kind of duty they perform for the county and assuming that they could meet the other criteria. And we also calculated the impact of switching to Plan C, which is 60%. So you can see in the far right-hand column of both of these charts, these are the cost estimates for the liability and also the per-year cash impact. So as we would expect, it's between Plans A and B, closer to Plan B, because it's just slightly higher than that. I emailed you some information on Friday about this as well. We had discussed the two different ways to administer this. One of them is that the 60% supplement would apply to all of the plans. So if a family, if someone was carrying family coverage under Key Care 200, that's the top left of this slide, their supplement would, at 60%, would be about $1,000, whereas a single subscriber employee only, the 60% would be about $420 for the supplement. And then the right-hand side of the slide shows if everyone, no matter what level of benefit they had enrolled in, would receive the same supplement, which would be 60% of the employee coverage at the highest level plan, which is Key Care 200. So everyone would receive about the $419 in this scenario, and it would be applied to their premium dollars. One thing that I didn't mention in the email, but I wanted to point out especially, oftentimes, people who carry the high deductible plan do that because it's more affordable. And if we chose the plan or the design on the left of this slide, those individuals would not receive as much benefit because their cost is lower. So they would receive a smaller dollar amount and would have to pay more than they would if everyone received the same benefit on the right-hand side of the slide. So if you look at the very bottom of the chart on the right-hand side, someone who carried family coverage would only have to pay $807 if we chose to design the plan on the right-hand side of the screen. Compared, I'm sorry, that's not correct. They would have to pay $807 compared to $490, but the disparity between the two is significantly less. So employee-only coverage, they would only have to pay $89 on the high deductible plan. I might have thoroughly confused you on the last comment. You want me to tell you that again?
Are you giving us any recommendation or you're just giving us the data?
My recommendation is to maintain a consistent and equitable plan for all the retiree employees that we would choose to design on the right side of the screen, which is to provide the same dollar amount of supplement for each employee.
Is that what the other communities? I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn. May I?
Yeah, go ahead and ask your question, and we'll go around to see if people have questions.
My apologies.
They do. Other locality, some jurisdictions may use the design on the left-hand side of the screen. I know that Roanoke County does the right-hand side of the screen. Christiansburg does, and I think that Blacksburg does as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's come down this way. Supervisor Kits, do you have any questions about what's been presented or the email that was sent out?
No, I don't have any questions. I think this is the way we went, we discussed last time. It was a compromise on where we wanted to move forward, so I don't have any issues with that.
If we could get, maybe as we go around, if we could get your consensus on which way you choose which, between these two plan designs. We plan to bring a draft of the policy back to the next meeting to go over with you and then maybe take action at that meeting or a subsequent meeting. But it will help us design the policy.
It might be important to state why you're recommending one option over the other It might be important to state why you're recommending one option over the other as far as implementing it as a new program and that kind of thing.
Right, another, in addition to providing consistency and an equitable plan, this is the very first time that we've implemented this. And so if we implement and go with the 60% of the Key Care 200 for single coverage amount, in the future, we could expand the program and provide the benefit on the left if you chose to do that, after we saw what the actual experience rate was. But I, I do believe that the right-hand side is the way to start the first year of the program.
Okay, because it would be new and, and like, it is easier to start off with one step at a time, and then if you want to add something later, then to go back and take something away. I think that's what you're, you're looking at.
Right, it would be easier to add on rather than make that choice and then decide you want to pull it back. That's a little bit harder to do as you move forward.
Okay, okay, knowing that then, Supervisor King, do you have a question or a comment?
When we discussed this last time, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we say if somebody had Carra Key 200 for a year, and some employees have the Carra Key 1000 and QHD 1500, didn't we say that they could keep that one? And we would pay 60% of that? And then if somebody had the Carra Key 1000, we would pay 60% of that. But they had to have the insurance coverage for at least 12 months.
That's correct.
Ain't that what we decided?
And we're not proposing that that part would change, that people could stay on the plan that they were on. The only part that I wanted to clarify and make sure that we were on the same page was about which, which amounts you're going to supplement. If you're going to supplement each of the individual premium amounts, or if you're going to provide a level supplement. We did, we talked about the plan on the left at the last meeting.
Okay, I, I just thought that's what we decided to go.
Okay, let's go back down here. Supervisor Demont?
I know what you're saying, and I, I think that's, that's kind of the sense that I got, too. At our last meeting was that we were just going to go with a 60% supplement. Now, I think the, the argument for changing to the option on the right side of the page, it does provide the 41940 same benefit across the board. And I guess the decision then would be, I thought we were also including, this is what I took away from the meeting, that if you had your family or your spouse or your children or whatever on the policy at the time that you retired, that they would also maintain eligibility after retirement as long as they were on there for the full year beforehand.
That's correct. So if someone had their spouse on the plan, they would remain on the plan if they chose that. The reason that I wanted to bring this forward was to make sure that people knew what the dollars looked like, because we had not shown this to have full disclosure of what the dollar amounts look like for various plans.
Can we go back to the previous slide really quick? What are these numbers based on? Are they, like, in cash payments column, Plan, for, for Plan C, where did the, I know that's the kind of like what the county's cost would be, but where did those numbers come from? I know the projections, but are they?
They're based on the plan on the left side of the screen. Is that what you want to know?
Yeah.
Yes, they're based on providing a supplement at the rate that people are actually paying. So if they have the family coverage, that's how much we would pay. We would pay 60% of the family rate.
That's my preference, is to stick with paying 60% of the coverage that people had at the time that they retire. And I understand that that's a very nice benefit. And it, I mean, it truly is. It's a wonderful benefit, but that was where I thought we were going with this. Now, I've said it before during these discussions, and I'll say it again. We're making a huge step forward by providing an even benefit of this type. But I have been operating kind of under the assumption that it was 60, we were talking about 60% off of the, we would pay 60% at full retirement age of what their plan costs at the time they retire. And so that's what I would prefer to do on the next slide. The, the column on the left, the 60% supplement applied to all plans would be my preference, but open to discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought up on the, on the previous slide that question, because that was going to be, my question is which scenario were those estimates built around? And like Supervisors Demont and King, I, I thought we were headed down the path of a, an even 60% across all plans for everybody. And that, I, I understand, looking at it through the lens of just determining almost kind of just a credit or a grant towards that. But then, for those folks that are on the high deductible or in that mid-tier, you know, plan, they're, they're actually getting a greater benefit than their peers who worked out and were in the kind of highest tier health plan. Right, and you know, so if, if we were supplementing 60% of the cost for somebody in the high deductible plan, they're still, they're still paying $203 a month, whereas if they were getting that 60% supplement of the top-tier plan, they're only paying $90 a month going forward. And while, hey, that's a fantastic benefit, I think, if we're talking equity or equitable distribution of the, or application of this, I, I lean towards the, the original proposal.
Okay, let's go back down here. Vice Chair Fidjikowski, what are you thinking?
After looking at both of them, I, I prefer the one on the right, which was, I guess, Plan B and, but the Plan B isn't the same on these slides, is it?
Maybe this is Plan Two.
Option B.
Option.
Yeah, after, after looking at them side by side, I like the idea of, of making it a level amount so that there's no confusion. And I also think, when a lot of these folks, if they spend 25, 30 years with us, they're not going to have all these big plans anyways. Possibly employee and a spouse. I seriously doubt there'll be many children on it. Not that there wouldn't be some, but I think the number would be very small. But I like starting out this way and giving us that flexibility as, as we see it applied, we can make adjustments to it. So I, I actually prefer the one on the right.
Okay, so let me see, so far I have, I have Grasky, Demont, and King with the one on the left, is that right? And, and then I have Fidjikowski over here with the one on the right. Let's go back down here. Supervisor Kits?
Yeah, so if I'm, if I'm doing my math right, so and not, it's not a 60%, 60% supplement at the top end, it's only about, I'm guessing about 35, about 35%. So instead of going like 736, where we're actually saying we're going to do 60%, we're doing 419, which is roughly 35%, I think, top of my head.
That's right, yes.
So it's not a 60% supplement, it's a 35% supplement. So we're kind of, I understand what we're saying at the bottom end, that we want to kind of level it out, but I just don't, I think it's kind of disingenuous. So I'm going to go for the left, because I didn't have a chance on that one, because I was the guinea pig out of the gate. But I, I think it's not 60%, it's 35, so.
That's true.
So I'm on the left.
You're on the left, okay. All right. Okay, Supervisor Byrne?
Administratively, is there a difference?
No, it's not, it's the same. It might be a tiny amount of difference, but it's not significant. You shouldn't consider the amount of administrative work for either one.
Okay, and then the cost is exactly the same?
No, the cost is not the same. We don't have a calculation of the cost. I don't think it's going to be a significant amount of difference. I would point out that the plan on the left is going to provide less dollars to employees that are single coverage for Key Care 1000 and the 1500 plan. So I think the cost will fairly much even out between those two.
Does any plan with Christiansburg or Blacksburg give like a flat amount, like nothing less than, you know, $400?
I don't know of a plan that says nothing less than $400, and if you're more than $400, you get 60%. I don't know of a plan that does that.
Okay.
That doesn't mean there's not one somewhere, but I'm not familiar with that plan. None of our neighbors do that.
And reiterate why you thought the equitable on the right might make more sense?
We're providing a benefit for the, for the employees and the retirees. So in my opinion, it makes sense that that's the amount we supplement, because those are the employees that were working, that worked for us. I do understand your points about providing additional benefit for the higher-level coverages, but that was my thought process.
And again, Blacksburg and Christiansburg do the left, or they do the right?
Christiansburg does the left. Do you know if Blacksburg? It's not clear in their policy, so they may do the right. They do, they probably do the right, because it just says 60%. And Christiansburg says, or what, it's not 60, but what their percentage is. And Christiansburg says their percentage capped at the employee-only rate. I, I'd prefer the left.
Okay, so we have five for that. Okay, and one for, all right, this is going to sound really weird, but I sort of prefer the right. And I just, I was looking at as, you know, like, if you're single, you would get less of a benefit than if you, you know, had a spouse and child. And the second thing I was looking at is that we're stepping into something, and I wasn't sure how the costs were going to come out, you know, with having it be a little bit more on the left. But, you know, it's whatever our board wants to do. And it looks like for direction-wise, we have the majority that would like to go ahead with the left. And I think it's a great benefit. But I want to thank you, Ms. Hill, for bringing to our attention your thought and your recommendation on the Option B that you sent.
You're welcome.
It makes sense.
Well, we know, we know a lot of employees watch this meeting.
Yeah.
Could we kind of see what they think? I mean, I don't know, maybe you know.
I don't.
How many?
I don't.
What's the percentage of people with the high insurance and the megrating and the load?
I can get that information for you. I don't know what that percentage is right now of current employees, but I know when people retire, I do think we might have that. Let me check real quick.
I, I know we're all trying to work together and get the employees something.
And I don't want.
I think it would be good if they had an input.
I don't, I don't want to imply that I'm not being supportive of the employees by presenting this information to you, because I think this is a really great and very generous plan. Currently, of the people that are enrolled in our health insurance as retirees, six of them are on Key Care 200 employee only. So they're on the top left as employee only. And then three of them have the high deductible 1500 plan for employee only. So those three people would get a better benefit on the right-hand side of the page, but the six would get the same. And then for the people with, there's one person that has Key Care 200 with a spouse, and there's one person who has QHD 1500 with a spouse.
Yeah, but they made their decision without this information. But if they had this information, would they have made a different decision, you know?
We will never know.
Right?
Well, but they're, they, do I understand correctly? They can't change their plan as they go into.
That's correct.
Retirement. They have to stick with, so.
Or they can step down, like, they could go from employee and children to employee.
Yes.
Within the same tier, right?
That is correct. They would have to stay on Key Care 200, Key Care 1000, or QHD 1500.
Right, but you couldn't go from the QHD to the Key Care 200, because you know you're going to still get a supplement.
Right.
Or whatever.
I think spelling the plan, I mean, we're, what we're saying is, or what I'm hearing that we're saying is, the plan that an employee retires with, the supplement is eligible for the plan that they had for the whole 12 months up to their retirement. And so that's the point at which, you know, any adjustment in family planning or, you know, future planning needs to be made. I do like the point that was made that at retirement age, we probably are not going to be seeing a lot of the big employee and children employee or family-type plans, because it's likely that people may have aged out of being able to cover their children under their insurance. And if while we're administering the supplement, they also age out. I would expect their supplement to be downgraded accordingly. But yeah, I still, even with that information all along, my feeling has been that we've been talking about what is shown on the left.
And also, I would appreciate us having a plan that if the grandparents have adopted their grandchildren, it's okay.
Well, yes, if they're legally adopted and they've been on, if they're legally adopted and they've been on the grandparents' plan for a year, they would.
Continue the family plan.
They're done, right? They get to do that.
Right.
I think Supervisor King, your question about what employees would prefer of those two plans, I, I would like to just throw a little wrinkle in, because it's, I feel like there's a lot of support for the plan on the left. What if we did the plan on the left, but for, and see, this is a little contrary to what I proposed earlier, but if we did the plan on the left, but for every employee-level plan, they got at least the, they got the $419 in this example.
That would be the minimum, you say?
Yes, so that would be the minimum, because that, that's one of the pieces that's a little bit harder for me to swallow, is that if somebody's having a hard time and they, and they need to have a higher, a lower-level plan, a less beneficial plan, they won't get as many dollars, and so they're not getting as much benefit. If you compare the employee-only for qualified high deductible at 1500 versus on both plans, one of them, the premium would be $203 for the employees, and the other one's $89.
I like that one better.
Well, the other thing is, we, we get the budget impact that you had was only for the left plan, not for the right plan. We didn't have the right plan yet, right?
That's, that is correct. I really don't think it's going to make a, you, the amount of dollar difference, I don't think it's going to change your mind about what, which direction to go. I don't think, I think it'll be minimal. What's going to happen after we implement a plan? We're going to find out how much employees really do participate in the plan, and that's the biggest unknown. That's the biggest question mark for the actuaries to see what our take rate is. So that's up in the air, you know, that's going to change the cost. But I don't know how much these plan designs will affect that.
I think the, the idea of making it 60% with a minimum supplement being 60% of Key Care 200 employee-only rate is a perfectly fine suggestion.
Compromise.
Yeah.
So, so, I just want to make sure I understand. So then, really, that would impact the employee supplement on the Key Care 1000 and the QHD 1500, right? It would bring those up from 38760 and 30480 to 419?
Yeah, that's what I'm here.
Yes.
How do you feel about that?
I could get on board with that.
You could get on board?
I could get on board.
Rowing the boat.
That's basically the same thing as one on the right is, right? 419?
It only brings it up on that.
On the employee only.
Employee only for those two plans. Everything else stays still at 60%.
It would be the left-hand side of the page, except for Key Care 1000 employee and qualified high deductible for employee. They would get the 419 instead of the lower amounts that are shown on the left-hand side of the screen.
So we would be saying that's the minimum supplement that we would pay for any employee. I like that.
It's a compromise.
It's not really a compromise.
It's, it's more beneficial.
Well, I mean, we really can't call this a, it may be a compromise amongst us, because we're trying to decide which one to go with. But it's, it's not a compromise. You're taking an employee, a single person, and you're going to give him a higher percentage than you would somebody with a family or a spouse? Because that's just the way it goes?
Well, that's what's happening anyway on the left. We do that now with our premiums. We, our minimum that we provide people is the, it's a, it's not 100% of the amount. But we, if somebody chose. of the amount, but we, if somebody chose qualified high deductible employee only now, the difference between what the supplement is for their, their premium and what, what we would provide them if they had Key Care 200, we put that in an HRA or HSA, one of their deferred plans, to try to make that, like, the minimum be equitable. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm still of the opinion, if we're gonna take one, we should either take the left or the right. I don't think we should mess with it. That's what I think.
But what you are saying is that we're being more consistent with what we're providing presently for the employees now. There is a base.
There is a base.
But it, it follows the left.
Yes, yes. So if a qualified high deductible employee only right now, their whole premium is covered. And then the difference between that cost and the cost of it employee only for Key Care 200 that the county's providing goes into another plan to make those be equitable.
So in essence, we're just trying to be consistent.
It is more consistent with what we're doing now.
So we can start here and change it the following year if we really felt compelled to do it. If the employees are used to it.
I was gonna say that.
I think that we might be on the same page.
Yeah. That's why I'm going with the one on the right.
Somebody doing the one on the right to start with.
No, more consistent is the one on the left with the base of 419.40 that Angie said was sort of a compromise, because it actually falls in line with what we're doing for our employees already.
Down here.
Do we need thumbs up?
Questions, comments?
A, B, C.
Okay, so what I'm.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Yeah. We modified option A. And what I'm hearing is, okay, and you're still not okay with that, right?
It really doesn't matter if I'm okay with it, because if the, if the consensus is to do it, I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, my opinion is we ought to start with the one on the right. That's all I'm saying. If we go with the modified one on the left and then next year we decide, I'd heck with it, let's just do 100% and a five-year minimum of working. And you get it.
Oh.
What, just money?
Soundbite.
There you go. You can get a job.
Soundbite for Roanoke Times right there.
Okay, so let's ask this. With the option A modified, thumbs up if you can support staff giving directions to that, okay? And what about Supervisor Kitson King? Are you, are you okay with?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
And you go bring us back.
I'm just playing math here.
Call straight.
I can do that. I can get the actuaries to run the numbers again. I don't know if we can do that next, at the next meeting. It might take them longer than that. I really don't think it's gonna have a huge impact on the cost.
Is it gonna be more than 5% difference?
One thing is, you come back to the other part, that if you're doing 419 across the board, then, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of caught in between on this one. I really am, because I completely understand where everybody's coming from and you want to make a benefit. But you're also talking, it's either you're gonna be paying somebody 60%, or you're gonna be paying 30%, depending on the cap, or you're gonna be paying 70% of what you're doing. But only a few are gonna be in it to 60, because the math doesn't equal up all the way across the board. That's, I think that's what you were saying. It's, it's, if you cap it, and I understand that, and it's, let's say, 419 across the board, you're on the right side, then somebody's getting 35% and somebody's getting 70%. And there's not, the average may be 60, but the ball doesn't, you know, roll that way. And it, but if you go the other way, even though it's 60%, the left-side group, the lower, the employee gets, you know, percentage-wise, it's the same, but it's a less pay benefit. So it's, I'm sitting here playing math. I hate math.
I don't think we need to get too hung up in that part of it. I, I feel like it's important for employee-only coverage that we have the minimum. I do feel strongly about that. It's obviously y'all's decision, but I do feel strongly that the minimum should be provided for the employee-only coverage on all levels of plant, plans, because, as I said earlier, if people are choosing one of those plans that is not as rich, there's a reason they're doing that, and so it would provide more benefit to those individuals.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. I agree they need, the benefit should go forward. I'm just trying to, you know, weigh the justification of it, and I do understand the minimum. Just, again, I hate, I hate math. So that's why we have accountants, right?
That's right.
Okay, so does that give you enough direction to?
Yes, you, but you do want me to get the, to run the numbers again before we bring the policy to you. Is that correct?
I don't need that.
You can do it on the same day.
I, I think it's gonna be so close that it's, do you mean run the numbers to the actuaries again?
I think I heard that over here, yes. I'm just getting direction.
Run them and bring the policy the same day as Supervisor Brown said, if you want.
Do what?
You can run them.
Yeah, I imagine that the numbers are gonna be close. I mean, you, you're saying that to us. So will it make a remarkable difference in the way that we vote? I doubt it.
And we have to pay the actuaries to run the projection. I will throw that out.
How much? Do you know?
Probably $3,000, maybe.
Do you want to do that, or?
I mean, that's the right thing to do, due diligence, to make sure we know exactly what we're getting into.
They'll have to run the numbers eventually. They'll have to run the numbers as of the end of June if you implement the policy. They'll have to do it again anyway.
Gotcha. All right. Everybody okay?
Yes, run the numbers again.
And bring them.
Bring that with the policy.
But you can bring it on the same day that you have the proposal.
And it won't be in two weeks.
Right.
I would, that's the part that I'm like, we're gonna spend $3,000 to find out that the difference is less than $3,000, and it's gonna delay making the decision. That's why I'm.
Because $3,000 out of 20,000 is 14%, which is way higher than.
Yeah.
Well, the policy wouldn't go into effect, though, until next fiscal year, right?
I think that if we, we would say that it was going into effect July 1st, but I think we would be hard-pressed for employees who were gonna retire in the next two months to not let them have this benefit. So in essence, it's going into effect immediately, and would, I believe that you guys said at a different meeting, pick up these few people that are doing it, are on the plan now. So it's pretty much immediately.
I guess my opinion is I want to vote on this on April the 8th. How do we get there? And I don't think that the number.
Can you just email us the, the new numbers?
They won't cap, they won't run the calculation in that time period, because they're doing a lot of work for people with their year ends coming up to do their audit work. So I, I do know that it'll take them more than two weeks to run the numbers.
Can you at least ask them, best guess, percentage-wise, what do you think?
They're not gonna tell us.
They're accountants. They don't do guesses.
Not from actuaries, you're saying, right?
Yeah, they don't, they don't give, they don't give estimates.
I could do rough math. I can do rough math.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Kind of math, but I can do some rough proration kind of math.
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Okay, is everyone?
Yes, I'll email you with that number.
Is everyone okay with Angie doing rough math? Okay, so she can bring both back. Okay. Do you want to bring that then back, as Supervisor Demott says at the next meeting? Would that give you enough time to do that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, then we're okay.
Yes, I can email you the number probably, and we'll bring the policy at the next meeting.
All right, any other comments or discussion on the benefit?
I make a motion we come out of work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, that leads us to items of consent. Is there a motion? Items of consent.
Motion.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
That's my talking to me over here.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We've already taken care of our new business item, so that leads us to reports. And our county attorney is not present tonight, so we will go to Ms. Hill.
Can we call him?
He said we could text him. I have a few things I wanted to share. We've started to receive funds through the revenue recovery that is associated with our EMS billing. It took a little while to get that all sorted out. Bonnie Rutherford has done a really great job working through that, and it's starting to trickle in a little bit now, so I'll keep you posted on that. And I wanted to give a shout out to Jenna Harris and her team. They received two gold awards for the summit program from Public Relations Society of America. One of the awards was a campaign award for a special event for a program that lasted longer than two days, which was for the NRV Senior Games in 2023. And then they got a tactics division for shared social media. There was a really cool story about a hound dog that was in our animal care and adoption center for 638 days that got adopted and was shared on tons of social media. So I wanted to tell Jen, congratulations on that. And the magistrate in Court Services Building is. Sorry, I, yes, we should applaud. I'm sorry. The magistrate in Court Services Building is moving along. The demolition is complete, and they're gonna work on the building pads to grade those this week. The Auburn Park bid was supposed to close this week, but it's gonna now close April the 4th. The, I'm so sorry, but we want to make sure that when the bids go out, they're right, and they had to get one more. They had to make another change in the design for some information on either civil, architectural, or electrical design features to make sure that when it goes out, the bids are good when they come back.
Anything else?
That's all. I might have a question.
I done told everybody the 28th.
That's why I'm, I just found out earlier today.
Okay.
Is this ours or somebody else's putting it off?
I don't know who, I don't know the answer to that, if it was the design, the A and E firm, or if it was our staff, that the A and E firm had to redo the specifications. Do you know, Chris?
Yeah. We chose to put it off because the A and E firm has not resolved an outstanding issue. So we've been pushing on them to resolve an architectural issue that has not been resolved yet.
Is this the same firm that we had to postpone it before?
Yes.
And send it back to them?
Yes.
And I don't mean to be rude, but why are we still fooling with them?
Because we have, we're so far into it, you have a contract with them. I was, yeah, you're at like 99.5% done, and you're at a point where you're like, you can't start over again with a new firm. But I do think it'll certainly impact how we make decisions in the future.
I mean, we've been waiting on this for how long?
Too long.
It is too long, because we hope that the bids would go out before the end of December. We hope that they would go out before the end of the, of 2023. There was a holdup earlier with some VDOT reviews, and then when that process worked through. Then we've had these delays.
So it's April what now?
8th.
8th?
8th. Correct.
April the 4th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
April the 4th. I believe we can call the people that owns this company and tell them if they have to work 24 hours a day, then they do it.
I think we.
Because the citizens deserve better than this.
We, I think we have put that pressure on them, but I also think we can certainly remind them of what that expectation is, absolutely.
I'll call them in the morning.
Yeah.
Tell them, give me a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all.
Well, Supervisor King, since you were talking, would you like to give your report, too? Okay. Well, then we'll move to Supervisor Kits. Do you have a report tonight?
I just want to let Ms. Martin know that I actually, I went to the MPO meeting, had a good discussion with them, and mentioned the Crab Creek Road, the tunnel in the area right there, where there's some water in a low bridge, and they've already went down, checked it out, and VDOT's allocated something for it, so that is already moving forward and was already in, in the works, kind of, sort of, but it's been pushed up a little bit because of the standing water and things like that. So just to let Ms. Martin know, we've been checking it out, so that's all I have.
Okay, Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Okay. Supervisor Gravsky?
No report this evening, thank you.
Supervisor Demott?
Um, just one piece of follow-up, and thank you Supervisor Kits for mentioning your road issue. To my knowledge, as of today, no work has yet been done on McCoy Road, I'm sorry, Walton Road, at the entrance to the recycling site. I know VDOT is working on a plan, but I'm getting a lot of continuous pressure that the water across the road is still going. It's rain or shine, it's always wet on the road there, that there's still deterioration ongoing there at the entrance to the New River Recycling Site, and also further down in the, the big S-curve area, the bridge that crosses Crab Creek. The weight of the vehicles that are constantly going over that bridge is causing significant bridge deterioration. On last Saturday, this got me a phone call. Every 15 minutes, four hours, trucks went by, starting at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday morning. And every 15 minutes, trucks were either going by full or empty, and it was multiple trucks. So it's like they're coming from a site, emptying, going back, filling, coming. And so that went on for hours on Saturday. And so just looking for, I, I know that nobody in here can provide me follow-up, but I, I really need some follow-up from VDOT as soon as possible, some action there. Thank you, that's it.
We'll pass that along as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So where will that go? Will that, can staff call VDOT?
We have already called them. We'll follow up again.
And, and that to staff's credit, they've, they've been extremely helpful, because I know I've said, do you have any information? Is there an update? And, and I know that you guys have been putting pressure on VDOT as well. I just wanted to make sure that it was heard publicly, that it's something that, you know, we're putting a lot of pressure to at least get some answers and some steps to make some changes for that road.
Okay. Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
I don't have any report, but if anybody hasn't seen my video, I'm glad to share it.
Oh my, okay. I don't have a report. Ms. Hill and I are going to present about budgets to the VACO certification course on Wednesday, so Vice Chair Fidjikowski is gonna be filling in at a couple of things. So, thank you for that. Actually, three different things, so thank you. Okay, if there's no other business, then we are officially adjourned until our special meeting, our public hearing Thursday, April 4th. And this is, we're gonna have a public hearing on the advertised budget and tax rates at 6:30 p.m. here. So, we are adjourned. I don't gavel.